File agreements against the village or however that's done to make sure that it's done. And number two, if, uh, if it's not done through Public Works according to ordinance as it's written in ordinance, I'll be glad to bring those ordinances and show you exactly which ones they are. How as a citizen, we as village residents can make sure those things get done. And, uh, that's it.
Um, well, um, all those, uh, things are certainly under some due process. It's not as strange that, you know, all these things have come up so astronomically now. We had someone that was here for eighteen years and we never got any reports. And I don't know, maybe this person here tonight may be able to stand up.
Uh, true, I'll bring him then.
We did any reports, we never got them.
Hmm.
And, but I can assure you that we've had to walk and test it for later. We've gone through certain procedures. And based on our, uh, people that has no jeopardy with the water, other system. And as our duty to try to make sure we maintain and keep it safely for the resident, for the water that they're drinking and we're drinking. And we certainly are not gonna jeopardize that in any way for something that we can afford. And we will always try to keep that up. And, um, before flushing the hydrogen go, we were looking at that. Um, we had a major water leak was on the east side of town. And we, and we were losing quite a bit of water and just didn't know where it was coming from. And we were losing hundreds and hundreds of gallons of water a day. And, uh, we just could not afford to do that at that time, you know, considering the fact since we didn't know where the water leak was coming from. And I believe that cost us about five, six, eighty thousand dollars in calculations and fees, I believe. And, and so what needs to be done, I mean, will be done. It may not necessarily be done in the schedule of time that has been measured and that it will be taken care of.
Are there any other public comments?
Yeah. I'd like to know why I need a platinum survey to do some work around my house, concrete work. Why?
Well, I believe, uh, the building commissioner will have to.
Excuse me, one minute. Uh, if I'm going back with the same sidewalk, why I would need a platinum survey? I'm not going over what's already there.
Well, the building commissioner would probably have to specifically answer that, but it would be my belief and only my belief is that the issue of that would be that, uh, he wants to see it on paper to make sure, I mean, that it didn't go on the next person's property, because he has to sign off on it, he has to issue off on it.
Okay.
And the person could say one thing and the actor could do another. But if the paper shows that, then that would, that would be the document.
Okay, it's over then, it'd be over now, and it's just, it's going back just like the old one down.
I mean, did you submit the paperwork here to the village?
Say it again?
Did you submit the paperwork here to the village?
I got the permit, but I don't have the survey. I have to get one, that's about one dollar.
Ask, ask the trustee. Ask the trustee to look into it for you. The mayor speaks for everybody. I don't even know why there's a board up there. The trustee should be able to look into that for you. That's why they're there, to want to get a paycheck.
I, I had the same answer, 'cause we have to make sure it's on your property. That's what is concerned. That's the only reason for that, to make sure you're not putting a sidewalk on the neighbor's property.
Well, I just said, if you're going back, that's like the old one down.
Yeah, but the old one could be on the neighbor's property. He wants to make sure the new one's not like that, that's all.
I'm sorry, sir, how long has that existing sidewalk been there?
Say that again?
How long has that existing sidewalk been there?
I don't know, I think that goes fifty years.
Fifty years.
Four years.
So maybe you're gonna be building it in there tomorrow? Um, and maybe, because at that point it would be a right of easement, since there is an existing sidewalk.
I think it's just a formality, wanting to go through a village, you know, like the trustee said and like I said, so, um, and I think it's something that could be asked. Okay, are there any other public comments?
Yes.
I just wanted to say a few words in case I didn't make myself perfectly clear. And people are starting, are still trying to figure out why I'm doing this, or figure me out, and why I'm here. Um, I'm basically here so that people who aren't able to come here physically can have a place to look at these meetings and what's going on. I go, you guys can go on YouTube, you can tell your friends and family. Go on YouTube, type in Village of Burnham. Mine are the first videos that come up. You guys can go and if you have, you know, a relative who can't make it out here, it's just another way. It's just similar. I don't put my opinion, I don't put anything, I just film it and then I put it on YouTube. That's all I wanted to make clear in case some people were still had a problem with that. I, I own property in Burnham like many of you guys. And I know if the mayor succeeds, we all succeed. Right? It's that simple. We should all work together and all of our values will go up. All of our property values will go up. If we just learn how to work together. And we have a team who's willing to work together. Let's come in here, present the problems, and also listen to part of the solutions. It can only be to our benefit, the more eyes that are had on things that go on in this very room. This is the only reason why I'm here, in case people were still trying to figure me out or what I was doing here. Okay? And that's all I want to say and, um, it seems I may have put myself in some kind of conflict between political colleagues. I'm not too sure, I don't know that many details, but I'm here for this purpose. And like I said, it's as easy as going on YouTube and typing in Village of Burnham. Uh, my name's Martin, by the way. If anyone has any questions, I'm always available. I've been around Burnham for more than twenty-two years, at the very least, so.
Thank you, Martin.
Martin, I have a counter section, Martin. Counter section, what, okay?
And are there any other public comments? And I would like to say, I mean, we've had, uh, um, we've had some, you know, employees have not really been in the best interest of Burnham. And, uh, sometimes the village is on a burden. And all burdens need to be released, a burden, you know, a burden. And I thank God that that burden has been released off this village, okay? And when people can come to these meetings, they can jump up and down, they can shout, and they can talk. I mean, but I know, I know, if they continue to come here to these meetings, then, then you may go forward. So I'm telling you right now, that the Village of Burnham is doing, um, a good job in maintaining the services of Burnham. I don't care who comes to these meetings, I don't care what they say, I'm telling you right now.
We got your word.
If people are not doing a good job, I, I, I mean, it is such a relief that you are not here anymore.
Mr. Mayor, may I say one more thing?
It is a relief. I mean, the burden has been delivered over this village, and I thank you.
May I say one more thing?
Yeah.
May I say one more thing? May I say one more thing, Mr. Mayor? Um, I don't know what's going on with water. It seems like a lot of people have problems with water right now. I think the easiest solution would be if we could access our water bills online. It's that, it solves everything. It solves every problem. We can see our bills. If somebody has a problem, you can come to the village and contest it. And they can tell you where you went wrong or where they went wrong. It's that simple. As long as we don't have access to online bill payment, to keep it that simple, we're gonna continue to have problems in areas we really shouldn't have problems in. And that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor.
What's our timeline of it?
Where do we stand on that?
So once we have the South utility billing software up and running?
What's our timeline of it?
Um, next year.
Next year, about when?
Just so everyone's clear, you can go back and see the videos. They said this exact same thing six months ago.
Mm-hmm. I just brought up many subjects and I was just, just 'cause I say it's okay, it's okay, I can assure you.
And for the record, um, you know, the weekly report thing for Public Works is a good idea, but I'm hands-on with the guys. I, if I see them on the front end loader or street sweeper or the leaf collector, if I see Dwayne out, I always stop to ask them what they're doing, what equipment they're using. And, uh, I try to keep the morale with the guys, you know. I'm, I'm hands-on with them and I actually see what's going on instead of hearing about it.
Just, I'm, I'm working during with, when sidewalks are put in, knowing where those sidewalks were put in and who they were put in for. When trees are trimmed, knowing when those trees, which buildings those trees are trimmed. Are they for new buildings that people just bought the houses? And we go up and we shake their hand and then their tree gets trimmed? And then they get some new sidewalks in front of our house? When the curbs in front of my house have been broken for ten years? That's the type of stuff I'm talking about. When, when, when sewers get cleaned or when, when, when water lines get fixed, where is that done? Who paid for it?
First of all, before you left, you gave us a sewer that needs to be repaired according to your estimation. And it would've cost sixty-four hundred dollars to repair. And I said no, and we cleaned it. And the last cup of rain we had, we have not had any water at that sewer area.
You fix somebody's private sewer.
And somebody took a meat out of their house, too.
You fix some, you, you, you clean somebody's private sewer. You went around me, made some personal calls, and had somebody's sewer cleaned at our dining.
Probably mine, I probably had my own.
Mm-hmm. If you wanna go there, we'll go there.
Are there any other comments? Let's keep coming over there. Are there any other comments?
One. Why we only have one drain over in, uh, in, on, on Ben? One in the front and one in the back? There's not enough drain to take the water out.
And one being, uh, probably. Excuse me. Okay, go ahead.
One drain will not take all of the water out. There's a drain down there by Mr. Harris' house, and it is not taking the water out. That's why we get so much water around in that thing. We have water standing around there all the time. It need to be, uh, it need to be repaired. It been need been repaired since I've been there.
Your garage area is kinda high, so it needs to be kinda tilted to the north toward Mr., uh, Mr. Harris' salt.
That's, that's one, that's one of the projects I'm working on, trying to get this platinum, uh, survey. That's one I'm gonna try to raise it up there. But it's still down in the alley there, it's water be standing there all the time. I've been over there since eight-eight, and it's been like that. You can also ride a rowboat down that way, right?
And there are some people that have garages, and garages, and garages are below the grade.
Yeah.
Nothing that we can do about it, nothing.
Yeah, I can understand.
Absolute category, but no.
I understand what you said.
Are there any other public comments?
Will that drain help in alleviating some of that flooding?
No, not really. It's not, um, I mean, it's like a sewer in the alley.
The only one, it's the only one, and the little pipe ain't no big a net for the water to go out while the rain fall over it.
Oh, it would happen, it ain't, it ain't that big. But for the record, in order to put a sewer in like that, it would cost about seventy thousand dollars.
So, I'm paying tax?
You paying taxes?
Yeah, I'm paying my tax.
But you may have to pay some extra.
Uh, I won't, I'm paying some extra tax. I've been paying extra taxes since I've been here.
All right, well then, well then, other comment? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Did you know your water bowls go?
I'll make the motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion for trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. I'm thinking about something that I see.
Trustee Cash?
Yes.
Trustee Mark, yes. Trustee Marcy, yes.
Trustee Greer? Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clay?
Yes. Thank you, uh, promotion pass. I hope everyone have a nice Thanksgiving and, uh, and the tree service, uh, started today and it wants some tree trimming. A couple of trees are gonna be taken down and, uh, and we can never, I mean, almost never, trim every tree that need to be trimmed, or some of them have time to get a trim. And another month or two in the summertime, they go back to some degree. So, but again, I mean, we will continue to do the best job we can, and you got my word on it. So, anybody can continue to come to the meeting and ask for this and ask for that. We're gonna do the job and, uh, and we'll take care of that and, uh, you know, we'll continue to do that. And, uh, as far as the sidewalks go, I mean, over the years that, uh, you know, that I've been sitting here in the center, we've done over a hundred thousand dollars in sidewalk repairs. And fifty thousand of that money came from Representative David Milner, when he was in office down in Springfield. And we will continue to repair sidewalks and I believe we made that repair, I would have, you know, moved off of Green Bay, and a few others. And eventually we will get to the sidewalks in Burnham that needs to be repaired. And Mr. Hutton, uh, if your sidewalk be repaired, I mean, I can assure you that we will get to it, and you got my word on it. At this time, we will hear a report from Clutch Lewis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Thank you, Clutch Lewis. Public educated and health safety and welfare, trustee Greer?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, I would like to, um, hopefully everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving holiday. Um, I have a list of events that will be happening in the Village of Burnham. And I'd like to start with December the fifth with Seda. Tanya, would you like to give a, uh, report on Seda?
Hello, everyone, my name is Tanya. I'm one of the coordinators over at the Burnham Community Center, which is located at 1420 South Torrance. Um, Seda, which will be out on the December fifth and the twelfth. Um, if you need help with your life or your gas bill, they're gonna be out at that time. The only thing is, they do have a couple of stipulations, so if you pick up one of these forms, if you know of anyone that needs help with paying their life or gas bill, because there are also, um, I guess income requirements that they have to meet, and also documentation that they need to bring with them. So they just need to have one of these forms also, so they're know what to bring with them, and whether or not they follow the qualifications as well. So that's the fifth of December and the twelfth of December. They just need to call the village hall to make an appointment.
I'm sorry, it's Tanya, when, what, December twelve?
Yes, December, December fifth and December twelve.
Okay, and what time?
They're gonna be here starting at nine fifty, I think it is, and all the way down to three ten. They're taking appointments.
And they?
And they just need to call the village, over here to the village hall to make their appointments with the ladies.
So thank you, Tanya. So if you are in that need of the service, please share the information with others, because certainly there are people out there that are in between jobs. You may know someone that are in between jobs that will have a job, can use the service. So they, December the fifth and December the twelfth. Um, December the twelfth is Remembrance Day.
Yeah.
December the twelfth, the tonic begins at sundown. December the twelfth also is the Virgin of, um, Guadalupe, Mexico. December the fifteenth, we have Juno Mingle in the park. And, um, more information will be given out on that, um, next week. December twenty-first, winter begins, and of course, December the twenty-fifth is Christmas. I just want to remind everyone, this is the time of year, that you're gonna be getting a lot of identity theft and also fraud. Uh, yesterday evening, I was expecting my daughter to come over. So when the doorbell rang, I rushed to the door. Normally I look out the door before I enter the door. But I rushed to the door, opened the door, and there were two ladies at the door. And they were asking, um, a number of questions in which I would not answer. And then they wanted to see a bill.
Like bill?
A bill. They come to the door outside. And, and they wanted to see a bill.
Yeah.
And so, um, I gave them, I think I gave them a couple of times, I gave some information I shouldn't have. Like, I said, well, that bill is, is, is not in my name. And so, it's, it's my sister. And so, they said, would your sister available? I said, no, she's not available. And they come to ask some questions. And so then, um, they turned and walked away after I guess I wasn't giving them what they thought. And they gave me this card. And so I went online to get this card. There's no information on this card. And so, if the people come to your door, please call, call the police. There, it was a group of, my, look, next door, there was someone, that's it, it was a whole group of people. But they're up to, so I'm gonna pass this card to you.
Sunday, they came back by now.
They came to your house also, yeah.
If I'm not expecting anybody, I'm gonna go downstairs.
Yes, yes, so they were out there.
Just a reminder, in the Village of Burnham, we have a non-solicitation ordinance. So there, we don't give permits for solicitation. So please call the police anytime you have solicitors and give a description and direction of travel.
Okay, so you're likely to be wary of anyone that's out there enjoying solicitation. Call the patrol police. Okay, so then that's it for me, thank you.
Couple of works in building up.
Good evening.
A leaf collector has been out, and, um, I don't know who all received this flyer. Um, but if you need a copy, I'll give you a copy. It's, uh, Parkway and Curbside Leaf Collection. And, um, it says, please rake your leaves to the grassy area of the parkway. And, uh, Public Works will be out using a leaf collector to pick up leaves from the parkway. And, uh, leaf collection aids the village by keeping leaves and debris from, debris from getting into our sewers, which help prevent street flooding during the upcoming winter season. And, um, Homewood disposals last day to pick up yard waste actually was Monday, uh, yesterday, the twenty-seventh. And, um, another thing, going back to, uh, the weekly report and stuff like that, if anyone has any questions, feel free to call me or leave a message at village hall. If you have my personal number, it's okay to call. I'm pretty good at getting back to people. You know, a lot of times you don't have all the answers, you can't see everything in the village. But if I don't have the answer, I definitely will try to give the answer, leave a personal message. And, uh, that's all I have.
Do you think they're gonna pick up leaves if we put them out next week? Or we don't know yet for sure?
When Homewood, I don't know.
They'll be picked up. As long as the weather, the weather permits, it'll be picked up.
'Cause I, I'm sure I saw a match that was out, it's like never ending.
Trying to get some mix with the garbage.
They're picking them up with the garbage, it goes in the same truck, right?
Well, that's, um, that's Homewood. Yeah, it was, it was out today.
An ordinance revolution, planning, trustee Greer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a question. Um, I don't know if, uh, for the ordinances, I don't know, from the ordinances from last week, there are some mistakes on there. Would that be under old business or should I address it now?
You mean in the ordinance or the game?
The ordinances from last meeting, there were some mistakes on there. Or I don't know if there were typos. Should I, uh, address it now under ordinance and planning? Or should I, uh, do it under old business?
Um, yeah, you can do it under old business. In fact, I'm finished. Finance, trustee.
I have nothing.
I have a question for, uh, the finance chair. Is it possible that we can start having our treasurer at, uh, our board meetings and possibly get a treasures report, so we can have an idea of what bills are, uh, owed and what bills are paid on a monthly basis?
Yeah, well, you can get that without the treasurer there, but we'll get you that.
Okay, so we'll have that next meeting?
Well, I'm not sure, but we make the meeting with you, we'll get it. We'll make sure you get it.
Okay, because every meeting, we just vote to pay the bills, but we have no idea what the bills are. So if we can start having a better understanding of who's weak?
When we approve them all, but whatever, okay.
Who's weak?
Committee that approves, and you're, you're, you have to approve all your committee's bills. So every committee chairperson sees everybody's bill.
So I can hit that one in?
We can see all the ones on here. You can come by anytime, though.
Okay.
Yeah, we get a, we approve them before, kind of every meeting, right? Every meeting?
Once the deal is made, you know, so, uh, I mean, it has to be paid, actually.
It has to be approved by at least three people.
So, so your, uh, committees meetings are prior to our board meetings?
No, we actually have, the firm gives us deals to review and look over. And we approve them inside. I have some, too, you could.
No, it's not a meeting.
Sometime before the meeting or after the meeting.
And trustees sit in their offices and approve it, but it's not a meeting, though.
Yeah, we have.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, public utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, trustee Greer pretty much talked about what I was gonna discuss. But I do want everyone to know that due to the deregulation, there are companies out trying to get ComEd and Nycor customers to switch their supplier. Your bill will still come under the name of ComEd for electric and Nycor for gas, but your supplier could be some other named company. And I was approached yesterday evening as well by a group of young adults that was trying to get me to switch my, both of my utilities to their company called Zoom. And I'm already with another company called Constellation. But they say, oh, that's us, we just changed our name, we got new badges. But if anyone come to your home, I would be leery. And if you're, um, wanting to look at a list of companies that are supplying, you can, uh, get a list from ComEd or Nycor. And it would probably be better to just, you make your own calls, opposed to having random people come to your door. Because I didn't trust them either, just, they didn't seem right, so. Yeah, just be careful.
I make one comment, I make one comment. Also, she, uh, she stated that we had talked last week and I've never seen them before. She said, well, we talked last week, then, so she was constantly veritating and, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation, trustee, your honor.
Um, you can visit my C C M P D to get updates on the ongoing, uh, parks and recreation in which we are a part of Memorial, Kibet Memorial Partnership.
Thank you, trustee, your honor.
Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said. I'm busy over there.
My C C M P D, my website, for the Memorial Park District, is my, no spaces, C C M P D.
Okay.
Is there a Facebook page?
Uh, that's fine.
Um, a man in presentation, a petition, to them communications, a memorial, a resignation. Unfinished business?
Yes. I'd like to, uh, motion to rescind ordinance twenty seventeen oh zero zero six. And, um, that's for the increase in the water bill, because it's a four hundred percent increase.
Um, well.
I'd like to revisit that and maybe come up with a new strategic plan.
Well, well, at this time, I don't think we would, um, we wouldn't want to rescind it. We're gonna, we have some discussion with the finance chairman, and then we're gonna get back on that.
So can we, uh, rescind it at this time until we have that discussion?
No, I'd rather not rescind it, 'cause once you rescind it, you gotta pass it again, so.
Oh, that, could we do that?
Maybe we could revise them, if we were to look at them again, we're gonna revisit them?
No, we have to, I mean, it has to be on the agenda and all the stuff to do that anyway, so. And we can't just, uh, rescind it without it being on the agenda.
So we can't do that under unfinished business?
Can we put it, can we put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Why don't we have the discussion first and then we'll get back?
And, and also for the sewers, that's, uh, from almost a four hundred percent increase also. So that, yeah, the agenda.
We don't have the discussion for ever.
Hundred percent.
Okay, and the ordinance for the salary increases, I don't know if it's a typo, but, um, the patrolman, it, it states that the, that the patrolman supervisor, maybe it's a typo, that the patrolman supervisor is making less and the sergeant is making less than the patrolman. That could be an oversight or a typo.
Is it one of them? So who?
That the patrolman supervisor and the sergeant is making less than the patrolman.
They, they weren't changed? The only thing that was changed on the ordinance was like what was there in the contract?
Oh, 'cause that's what it states in the ordinance, maybe it's an oversight or a thing?
If, if it wasn't ever like brought, like, um, brought up? It hasn't been changed, so I don't know if that has to be.
No, it was a typo, it was an error.
But it hasn't been changed.
So for the, for the ordinance for the water increase and the sewer increase, do you think that'd be on the next agenda?
We'll have to review it to see whether, if we have staff, let's put it on the agenda. Because we will let you know.
Because, um, looking at this, it's gonna increase from like a hundred dollars to seven hundred dollars per quart.
No, that's not true. I mean, we will let you know, we, we're gonna have a meeting, uh, then.
Okay, how can I know about that meeting? I'd like to.
Just like you know about this one.
In an email?
Well, yes.
And it's every, every second and fourth Tuesday?
Yeah, whenever it is, you will know about it. We don't have secret meetings, okay?
Thank you.
On the new business, I would ask, uh, Barryx Anderson, if you would, uh, you come up and explain, uh, to the board. Hold it, would you find to get a confidence?
Sure, sure. My name's Sturz Anderson, I'm with Open Lands. And I've been, um, coming before you, probably for close to eight, eight years now, since two thousand eight. Um, and I'm, I'm serving as a project manager for the village on a purely volunteer basis at Open Lands. To, to try to get to Spurton Greenway Trail connected. Uh, as you know, it's state, state street on the south side of the village trail exists. Uh, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources will be extending the trail from William Powers uh, down to ComEd line. It'll come over to Brainerd Avenue, it'll terminate right in front of the Burger King. Uh, all the engineering is done on that IDNR trail. And the funding is basically in place for that trail, too. The only reason that the IDNR. The only reason that the I D and R hasn't built that trail was because of Governor Rounder putting a hold on, on state expenses. It, that could be released, and, and the money is there to get that trail built. So we're expecting that trail's going to happen, I would hope, in two thousand, uh, eighteen. Can't promise that, but, you know, it's, it's going to, it's, it's a point now where, because the governor's going to be running for reelection, you know, that's, that's when politicians like to see projects happen. So I think there's a little bit of a chance that trail may be built. At that point, the Village of Burnham will be the only gap in the Burnham Greenway, uh, that starts at Indianapolis Boulevard, uh, parallels, uh, the Skyway before it hits the Burnham Greenway Trail. Talk that way, you're saying, okay. Okay, um, and, and extends except for the gap here in the Village of Burnham, all the way down to the Indiana State Border in Lansing. Uh, that trail, uh, it's called the Pennsy Trail, in the Village of Lansing, it's still the same corridor. It extends into Indiana, and Indiana is, is extending that Pennsy Greenway all the way to Crown Point, Indiana. About half of that trail has been built already in Indiana. So this is a major regional trail. Uh, the Burnham Greenway is also a part of what's called the Grand Illinois Trail, which is a five hundred mile trail loop around northern Illinois. That trail loop is ninety-five percent done. Uh, local communities have been working on that five hundred mile Grand Illinois Trail for twenty years. It's ninety-five percent in place. So we have these gaps that have been difficult to engineer. They tend to be the most difficult final stretches to get built. And one here in Burnham is, is typical of one of these tough ones. Um, we were very successful here in Burnham. The village applied, um, seven, eight years ago for federal funding to do the final engineering on the trail. Uh, Senator Durbin's office supported that. That final engineering is basically done. Uh, the village also applied to, uh, the Illinois Commerce Commission. And any project, you know, it's a federally funded project, needs twenty percent of the local match. So the village applied for a two million dollar grant, uh, in safe crossing funds to the Illinois Commerce Commission. That was approved six, six, I think about six years ago, and that money, uh, was going to be utilized as the match for the construction of the trail. The village, uh, successfully applied for what's called C M A C, C M A Q funding, congestion mitigation air quality funding, about two point three million dollars. That was approved by C M A C. That's going to be matched with the two million dollar I C C safe crossing monies. And then we hit the.